Since I'm not coming.
Paul and Ray.
Good morning.
Oh.
Um. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the WA Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, the twenty eighth of May, twenty twenty five. Welcome to those in person and online today. The meeting is being live streamed and recorded and is available for viewing via the committee website and YouTube. And commission members may refer to technical devices throughout the meeting to assist them in during the information before them. In opening the meeting, I'd like to acknowledge that today we meet on the lands of the Wadjuk people of the Nungar nation and pay respects to elders past and present. Um. In respect to apologies and leave of absence, we do not have any members' um apologies today. Um. Attending in person, we have myself, Emma Cole, the chairperson, Commissioner Adair, um Commissioner Brooks, Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Sandry, Commissioner Shears, and we do have Commissioner Bennett, who'll be arriving around nine forty five AM today. And attending via Zoom, we have Deputy Chairperson, Commissioner Ray Heron, and Commissioner Paul Lakey. Thank you for joining us online today from further afield. Um. And observers, um, we are being joined today by Anthony Canis, Justin McCurdy from DOT. I think Anthony's joining us at ten o'clock. Um. The Setraves um from Department of Communities, Damien Hills from Dewar, and Graham Hayward from Water Corp. I'll now move to disclosures of interest in relation to item three point one, which is the Lake Farm Retreat proposed MRS amendment. Commissioner Bennett has declared an indirect pecuniary interest in that Commissioner Bennett has advised that CLA Town Planning and Design, her employer, have provided services for Land Group WA. However, no projects were related to this item, but on this item, Commissioner Bennett is not seeking to take part. Now, in relation to the same item, Commissioner Brooks has declared a perceived impartiality interest in that Urbakwa, her employer, have been engaged by the Department of Planning Lands and Heritage to provide water management reporting for the Hepburn East Development Area, which abuts this site. Um. Members, I'm happy to accept this as an impartiality interest, um, unless there is any concern. Thank you very much. On the same item, Commissioner Sandry has advised a perceived impartiality interest in that Tony Arias was a former CEO of an organisation she sat on the local government board of, and was listed, um, and is listed today as a deputy. I'm happy to accept that as a perceived impartiality unless there's any dissent. Thank you very much. On item four point one, which is the proposed MRS amendments for North East Beldivas District Structure Plan area, Commissioner Shears had a perceived impartiality interest in that Commissioner Shears advises that the general manager of Stockland is known to her and her family. Uh, members happy to accept this as impartiality and for Commissioner Shears to participate unless there's any dissent. Thank you. And on the same item, Commissioner Bennett has declared a direct pecuniary interest um as uh CLA Town Planning and Design, her employer, are the proponent for this item, and Commissioner Bennett is not seeking to participate in this item. Um. On the same item, Commissioner Sandry has declared a perceived impartiality interest in that her partner works for the Shire of Serpentine, Geraldale, and Andrew Trossick, who is making a deputation at item two point two, and so is a representative of this local government. And Commissioner Sandry also advised that Lorian Nominees Proprietary Limited is listed as a landowner and were a former client on unrelated matters in this, in Commissioner Sandry's former business more than two years ago. Um. Commission members happy to accept that as a perceived impartiality interest. Is there any dissent? Thank you. On the improvement scheme, item four point two for Redcliffe Station Precinct, Commissioner Brooks has declared a direct pecuniary interest in that Urbakwa, her employer, was previously appointed by the City of Perth to prepare water management strategy for Redcliffe.
This is the right.
City of Perth.
That's the wrong text.
The wrong text, yes.
Yes, but I.
Find the correct text. Yeah, definitely not in the.
I can explain if you like.
Yes, if you would like to.
I'm currently appointed by the Department of Planning Lands and Heritage to provide water management.
For the precinct. Water management reporting for the precinct, yeah. And on that basis, we're not frequent participating at Arsenal. I wanted to step out. Thank you very much. Um. Item four point seven amendments to model the subdivision conditions um for schools. Commissioner Bennett has declared a perceived impartiality interest in that um CLA Town Planning, her employer at the Stockland, who are listed as one of the applicants, has lodged the request for reconsideration and have also been engaged with respect to the review of the subdivisions and advice notes. This has come in as a perceived impartiality interest. Is there any concerns? Accept that. Thank you very much. And on the same item, Commissioner Heron has declared a perceived impartiality interest in that Urbas, his employer, are listed as one of the applicants that lodged the request for reconsideration and have been engaged with respect to the review of subdivision conditions and advice notes. So very similar. Is there any um concern with this being a perceived impartiality interest? Thank you very much. And further to that, we have in relation to item four point ten, the establishment of the additional planning committee or UWA QE two planning committee. Commissioner Bennett has declared that she lives within the study area um and has declared actual impartiality interest. So uh my view would be that Commissioner Bennett would not participate in the item. Is there any concern with that? Okay. And on the same item, um Commissioner Brooks has declared that she undertook work on the project um from a um, well, the City of Perth, um, from a water management perspective, um, and that work has now been uh taken on board by the department. So I think we're also treating this as an actual shallity, and Commissioner Brooks is also happy to step out on this item. Um. Commission members, are there any further declarations of interest? Thank you very much. Um. Disclosures of representation, item four point one. I have disclosed a um disclosure in relation to item three point one, the proposed MRS amendment at Lake Farm Retreat, in that I met with the representatives from Land Group WA in the course of my normal activities as the chairperson of the WAPC, and I was not provided with any additional information that is not available to the commission today. Um. I'll also make the same declaration in item four point one, in that I have also met with the representatives from Stockland in the course of my normal activities as the chairperson, and again, have not been provided with any additional information to that, which is provided to commissioners. Uh, commissioners, are there any other disclosures of representation? Well, my apologies. We do have another declaration from Commissioner Bennett. This is in relation to the establishment of the Technical Advisory Group for West Allen Brook, which is item four point eleven. Um, CLA Act for Hisperia on other projects, and this is an indirect pecuniary interest. So on this item, I would advise that Commissioner Bennett would be stepping out. Is there any concern on that? Thank you very much. Again, I'll just check any further declarations? No, thank you very much. Um. Sam will now go to, oh, just to note that we have had um additional information from members, um, from uh questions from Commissioner Sandry and Commissioner Hall attached at um item one point five point one. We do have a number of alternate recommendations that have also come through from offices, so just we'll we'll work through those, so just to draw your attention to that. And we have had um an amendment in relation to um QE two UWA item. Um. On item one point five, can all members please indicate that they have received and considered the information? Um. Paul, can't see your hand there, but I'm assuming that you have. Thank you very much. Um. Also dealing with the confirmation of the previous minutes on Wednesday, the thirtieth of April twenty twenty five. Is there any comments in relation to the minutes? Happy to accept the minutes. So please have a mover and seconder. Moved by Commissioner Sandry, seconded by Commissioner Brooks. Any dissent? Thank you. They are carried. I'll now hand over to Sam for deputations and presentations. Thank you, Sam.
Okay. Um. Good morning, and I welcome always the present and this morning to make a deputation to the Western Australian Planning Commission, either in person or via Zoom. You will be invited to join the table or promoted to a panelist via Zoom to deliver your deputation this morning. You have been advised of your allocated time through the email you received, and this will be managed by a timer which will appear on the screen, which will count around that time. If you do have a PowerPoint presentation this morning, this will be displayed on the screen throughout your presentation, asked, requested to advise us as you wish to advance the slides. But moving to the first um deputation on the agenda this morning, which is on item three point one of the agenda, the proposed MRS amendment at Lake Farm Retreat Urban Precinct Approval to Advertise, we're welcoming eastern vestro, Tony Arias and Matthew Philob, and they're joining us in person this morning. So um please join us at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Chair and commission members, for having me to um have this deputation and and just talk through our proposal here. So Lake Farm Retreat is obviously a proposed MRS amendment that we have put forward, and personally, I'm quite enthusiastic about it and excited about about this project. So um if you go to the next slide, slide, um, I'm managing director of Land Group WA, which is the development uh business uh uh related to Home Group, which is probably the better known uh building company in WA. So we uh just for some quick context around that, um, we we sort of have a pretty unique, have a unique understanding of uh not only development, but then uh the the whole journey from from re-gerning land to subdividing, and then, you know, the customer journey through buying that land and building an eventual home on it. So we do take um an approach where we're looking, you know, trying to understand and get the best sort of outcome for the built form outcome at the end of the day, which is really what this community will end up becoming. Um, if this is obviously able to go forward. Um. And from a uh a work perspective, we put a lot of work uh into uh this proposal. There's been a lot of work done in the background. We've tried to be as thorough as we possibly can, uh, which Tony will talk to in in just a minute. But um essentially, you know, the location of this site, um, the uh infrastructure that's surrounding it, um, and the ability to utilise that really creates an opportunity where this is a site that, um, although there's still some work, you know, quite a bit of work that needs to be done in the background, um, through normal process, uh, there isn't, like a lot of other urban zoned, uh, pieces of land, there is uh no significant constraint of servicing and the ability to deliver lots, um, almost as, you know, uh, immediately as as the zoning comes through. So um I think that's what makes this quite an exciting, exciting project for Land Group and obviously must through at the same time. Tony, probably talk to some of the things are better than me.
Uh, thank you, Anthony, and good morning, everyone. Uh, you have before you a fairly comprehensive report that I think addresses relevant issues. So I'd like to just focus on uh a few points. Save up. Next slide, please. So what you have before you is sort of context, and um the citing question is thirteen kilometres from Perth CBD and Perth Airport. It's part of the urban framework, and it does form a logical extension to the existing urban setting. In terms of the local context, which is the map to the right, um, you can see that it's close to essential services, got schools, retail, uh, community, importantly, employment, and it's got good road and rail access with the new Balladura Rail Station only two kilometres away. So it's a, the context is really important. If I could have the next slide, please. So in terms of the proposal, we're seeking support to initiate the zoning of about fifty four hectares to urban and for approximately four hectares to reach open space. The current um land use on the site is rural living, uh, and that ranges from lifestyle type uh uses to intensive agriculture, and it's important to understand that. Um, next slide, please. Okay, um, probably most critical, in terms of state and strategic planning framework, it's important to understand this is not an ad hoc proposal submitted by the landowner. Um, it follows a number of years of investigation by government through the WAPC. Initially, the site was identified as a planning investigation area, and that was part of the appeal uh at three point five million planning framework in two thousand and eighteen. Following a number of years of investigation by the WAPC, it was recommended for urban expansion. And that was part of the northeast subregional framework. So that was late two thousand and three. So has a strategic basis for initiating this current proposal. Um. In terms of site planning policy, I won't go into detail, but they're listed there, and as I said, the MRS amendment report addresses that, and uh the majority of those are either broadly consistent or fully consistent. And those areas that aren't consistent, we acknowledge need a little bit more work, but um principally, it it's able to proceed. As part of the investig-, if I could have the next slide, please. Uh, as part of the uh investigations to date, um, we undertook pre-referral consultation with the key stakeholders, and they're listed on the slide. It's fair to say that um as a result of that and the work we've done, there's no objection to the initiation of the MRS amendment. That's not to say there's not issues raised and there's uh not a need for further work, but um the issues raised are what you would describe as normal planning environmental requirements that would be addressed as part of detailed planning, structure planning, and uh refinement environmental issues. So none of those issues prevent the amendment being advertised. Um, I note in the report, Dewar's raised some issues in terms of um the district water management strategy. Um, we've had probably three or four meetings, and we're at a point where we're pretty comfortable that we're addressing those. Um, and they're not significant matters, but they are matters that need to be addressed, and uh we propose to finalise that as part of the advertising and refinement of the structure plan.
Were there any other slides that you wanted to move through before I'm on you?
Okay, thank you. Um, very quickly, just to conclude, in terms of the next step, you might go to the next slide. Um, it just gives you um some of the steps we we've been through. Um, we've had a heritage assessment and met with community uh indigenous leaders. Uh, we've had two workshops to date, and that's led us to um refine, understanding the historical wetlands, the vegetation, um, in terms of what's important, and leading to a plan. And we've got a concept plan. In fact, that's the final slide. Um, and it is only a concept plan. It's, you know, the first step in the planning process, but it starts to recognise what the constraints are, put them spatially, and what potentially how we might deal with the historical wetlands, the important vegetation, and integration of this area into the urban framework to the south.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
I really appreciate that. Um. So thank you, Anthony, Tony and Matthew for joining us today. I'll now see if commission members have any questions of you. Commissioners, any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Sandry.
Thank you for the check.
Thank you for the check.
Commissioner Heron following.
Thank you for the deputation. I do note that there's a couple of potential constraints that will be worked through in the next phase of planning. I just wondered whether, what the timeframe is around the structure planning of the site.
Thank you. As you can see, we've, we've, we're not stopping, and even through the current process, it's continuing. The, the next step, providing we get support from the Commission to initiation, we're very keen to get the structure planning process well advanced. As Anthony indicated, this, this land's unique in the sense that it's within that urban framework. But unlike other urban proposals, we can service this land, a big part of it with water and sewer almost immediately. So our, this is not a land bank proposal. This is something we want to get underway. So our programme is to have this resolved in 25 if we can.
Chair, just one more question. Thank you. Just the servicing was my other question. So has, has there been infrastructure studies on the site to determine that servicing is available for the site overall globally?
Yeah, through the chair. Yeah, as certainly one of the very first things we did as part of the pre-feasibility was understanding what services are available and water, sewer are available. So it would probably services over 500 lots.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sandry, over to Commissioner Heron.
Thank you. Through the chair, the, there's obviously a lot of information and there's a level of logic applied to that. A key item from my perspective, however, is that the proximity to services such as schools and transport as the crow flies is very good, obviously, but obviously with a significant road barrier. Have you looked at what potential connections and how pedestrian connections might be made between this precinct and the remainder of the Balladura residential cell?
Thank you through the chair. And Mr. Heron's right in pointing out, that is an issue that we, we need to address. And the city of Swan has raised it as a matter that they, they, they want some further information. The initial traffic assessment is that we provide a roundabout to provide access to the site, and from a traffic perspective, that, that works. The, the issue of getting kids across is, is more difficult. But we're looking at potentially we could put crossings because it would need to be. Part of it is also dependent on what happens to the land to the east that is in the Commission ownership and currently also part of an investigation area, because if that proceeds, there's a requirement for a school for both parcels.
And thank you. That is, thank you.
Um, Commissioners, any further questions? Thank you very much for your deputation.
Thank you.
Deputation this morning is on item 4.1 of the proposed MRS amendments, 157. North East Bell Divas DSP precinct one and 1428 North East Bell Divas PSP two to four. And we're welcoming Andrew Trossick via Zoom. They need to, um, aware that they could stay because it's a non-confidential item.
I said the same thing to Sam.
So would you mind stepping out to see if they're there still and remind that? Resolve this sort of technical issue with Andrew. There, and he did accept our. Well, we just, if you haven't got their. We might, while we resolve the technical issue with Andrew Trossick, because he seems to have disappeared, we might move to the next deputation, which is from same item, item. And he now appeared. There we go. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, sir.
Welcome.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. These things happen. We're, you know, in a strange technological environment here. Um, so welcome to the Planning Commission this morning. We'll bring up your presentation now and invite you to commit your deputation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you mind bringing presentation?
Hi.
Sorry, Andrew, won't be his moment.
Yeah, no. Excellent. Fantastic. Thank you and good morning. My name's Andrew Trossick, presenting on behalf of the Shire. And I'm coming to you from Mandajong on lands of the Nala Kalabuja peoples of the Nunga nation. And that nation, I pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. And next slide, please. No worries.
Apparently not.
Okay, yeah, so this is similar to deputation. I had the opportunity to present at the last meeting. Certainly, the Shire remains in support of the proposal for further urbanisation in the growth corridors of Perth. And from the perspective of the Shire, and particularly Mandajong, which is one of the, the three priority growth areas nominated in the Perth and Peel regions, we're just mindful at this opportunity to ensure that our approaches to infrastructure planning, particularly our approach to road infrastructure planning, I guess is on the front foot. And particularly Mandajong Road, we've identified in our submission the important role that will play as it connects between Orpheus and the Western Trade Coast and then the Fremantle, Rockingham Controlled Access Highway, Quanana Freeway, the future Tonkin Highway, South West Highway and then Albany Highway. So we see this east-west link as extremely important. And at this sort of first phase of planning and got suitable protection of that to become what we sort of see as an extremely important, a, a, a road connection servicing a whole range of growth, industry, defence and connectivity needs. Next slide, please. Similar to my last presentation, just some sort of thought at the issues around floodplain management. Certainly, the Shire, one of the most illuminating aspects of our district is just how flat and how long water sits on the landscape after a rainfall event. And so ultimately, anything that happens sort of downstream will have a potential impact on the way flooding can be managed upstream. So we're just sort of focusing in on the importance of district water management strategy planning for this precinct and how, I guess, that needs to be cognisant of a broader subregional sort of drainage approach, which I know the Perth and Peel and Planning Investigation had a lot of interest in as well. Next slide, please. Um, in terms of the notion of interface, being along the freight rail interface to the north, Quanana Freeway interface to the west, we have looked at particularly maybe how we can sort of future-proof some of the challenges that we're particularly facing around the enterprise and employment aspect. So the Shire experienced another 5.1% year-on-year growth last year, which is fantastic. We love welcoming the nearly two families a day into the Shire. But we are finding it challenging to build the, the, the economic and employment, our land use commencement with that. So we're just thinking with this proposal here, particularly maybe lower amenity edges to the freight rail and to the freeway, thinking about opportunities for enterprise and employment land uses to help generate some of that, that jobs growth, which I guess contribute to that broader 20-minute city idea and activity centres and activity corridors. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, Andrew, it's Chair Emma Cole here. I'm just wondering if you have long to go. You're saying, thank you. I assume you've finished.
Finished, yes, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your deputation, Andrew. I'll now open up to questions from Commissioners. Questions. Right, thank you, Andrew. Appreciate you being.
Our pleasure. Thank you. Goodbye.
Bye bye.
The next deputation is on item 4.1 of the. Brett Ashby from the City of Rockingham, who will be joining us via Zoom. Good morning, Brett.
Morning, how are you going?
Thank you. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting this morning. Overtake deputation when you're ready. Thank you.
Great, and thank you for the opportunity to present this morning. Commissioners would be aware that the city is objected to the MRS amendments on a number of grounds, both as landowner of lot one Mandajong Road and also as the local government responsible for planning of the area. I note that some of the reasons for objection in both respects related to the relevant DSP being unresolved and also broader strategic views on preference for employment generating land. While the city's views on those matters haven't necessarily changed, I won't go into them, given the WAPC has recently determined the DSP. What still hasn't been resolved, to the best of my knowledge, is confirmation of arrangements for the multiple use corridor or flood storage area. This raises a number of concerns. Firstly, arrangements for management of that MUC are critically development progressing. And until such times those arrangements have been resolved, there remains doubt as to whether it can indeed proceed. Really, from our point of view, it's a potential fatal flaw in the proposal. Now, this includes confirmation of which body or party will take responsibility for the MUC, both in the short and long term. And the city's made it clear at this stage that doesn't intend to take on that responsibility, and that includes any role in monitoring or compliance related to that corridor. Secondly, I'm not aware of any arrangements that have been established to equitably share the cost and impacts of the MUC across the affected landowners, which is critical. Particularly on this point, the inclusion of the city's lot one landholding entirely within the MUC requires the land to remain in its current form and would not likely be able to used, developed or disposed of for any alternative suitable use in the future or for the city to realise any value from it. And I'd like to point out that that land was purchased by the city directly and is held in fee simple as a strategic landholding. So just in conclusion, the city remains of the view that the land should not be rezoned until these matters have been resolved. If the WAPC is mindful of supporting the amendments to proceed, we respectfully request that the rezoning be limited to urban deferred for both until arrangements with respect to the MUC are more substantially resolved. So thank you for the opportunity, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for your deputation, Brett. It's Emma Cole, Chair here. I will now go to the Commission Members to see if there are questions. Commissioner Hall?
Thanks, Chair. Thanks for your presentation, Brett. In, in the scenario that the multiple use corridor management was resolved, would the city still have objections or would that then be in support if the arrangements didn't have to come to the city?
I think without getting into those kind of previous points of objection that I referred to but didn't kind of elaborate on, I think we'd still have some reserve, some reservations with the proposal surrounding access and, and all those sort of things. But we'd probably accept that, given the DSP has been adopted, that it's appropriate for the rezoning to proceed, with the exception of this issue of equitable sharing of costs and impacts of the MUC and the city's landholding being completely affected by it. So we'd still want to see that resolved.
Thank you. Any further questions? Commissioner Heron?
And thank you. Through the chair, just in terms of the, the challenges that were raised in relation to the, I suppose, the management of the multiple use corridors. I'm assuming obviously there's been extensive discussions to date. The concern, I'm assuming, would relate to cost burden for the city is, can I just, I'm just wanting to understand what's about point of principle versus financial impact.
Yeah, so I think it's both cost of management, but also the risk that comes with that as well. So mindful that it's expected to be rare events that impact on the MUC. Our experience with development within marginal sites with significant drainage issues hasn't been entirely positive. So we are well aware that best endeavours in terms of coming up with engineering solutions doesn't mean you're not going to have issues that arise from it. So the, the risk side of taking responsibility for it's a big one as well.
And thank you. And through the chair, in terms of the, the, the city's landholding, which is understood, so it was acquired as a freehold site as a strategic purchase as opposed to through a planning process, as I think you've clarified. And subject to there being, you know, suitable cost sharing arrangements, is that, would that resolve that concern? In relation to, obviously, if, if the city were to be compensated for its landholding as part of that process, I'm assuming that that would, again, the issue of cost versus point of principle.
Yeah, I think the city is open to compensation as a solution to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions? Great. Thank you very much, Brett. We appreciate your deputation today.
Great, thank you.
The next deputation, also on item 4.1 on the agenda, we're welcoming Daniel Martinevich, Damian Seppert, Shane McQuaid and Louise Naratek. And they are joining us in person this morning, joining us at the table.
Good morning, Chair and Commission Members, and thank you for the opportunity to make this deputation today. So as mentioned, I'm Damian from Stockland, Dan from CLE, and Shane's also here for questions. And although I suspect you're quite familiar with us now, I think we've been here four times in the last 12 months alone, just on this project. So, and we've also managed an SPC appearance in the middle of all of that for Bulk Earthworks DA as well. So given that extensive history, I'll keep my part brief and pass over to Dan. But we're obviously speaking in support of today's MRS amendment, a journey we've been on now for the last eight years since we first acquired the site back in 2017. We're very much now the precipice of being able to unlock critically required housing supply. So the DSP was approved in this forum last month. The Bulk Earthworks DA was approved back in March, and that $21 million Bulk Earthworks contract has now been awarded and underway. And the MRS amendment, hopefully if that progresses today, that will open the door for us being able to lodge a local structure plan, which is the, why the timing of today's decision is so important. And that's all basically working towards being able to unlock housing supply in around 18 months. And I know you probably get a lot of proponents in here saying they can deliver housing within two years, and sometimes that's quite optimistic. But for me, 18 months on this project is completely doable, given we've already started the earthworks. If the MRS progresses today, all that we require to that point is local structure plan and subdivision approvals to get on with it essentially. And basically now I'll pass over to Dan to take you through all the relevant running detail that, and well, well, that.
Thanks, Damian, and good morning to the Commission. As touched on, the district structure plan is recently approved. And so the rezoning of the land today, which the Commission is considering, is the natural and orderly next step in the sequential planning process towards developing the land for its intended purpose. Whilst our presentation this morning is in support of the change in term, we do request that the Commission adopt a recommendation to the Minister. we do request that the commission adopt a recommendation to the minister that will enable the precinct one area to progress directly to the urban zone. Next slide please. We therefore have four matters that we request the commission's support for this morning, which we'll briefly summarise now and then talk to in more detail on the next slides. On the first point, we support precincts two to four being transferred to the urban deferred zone as per the initiated and advertised version of amendment one four two eight. Secondly, we request that the commission recommend that precinct one, under the separate amendment one four two seven, be transferred directly to the urban zone. Following this, and as per item three on screen, we request that precinct one is concurrently zoned to the development zone under the local planning scheme. Next slide please. Our request for precinct one as urban is visually shown on screen by the indicative MRS plan, with the balance of the DSP area being held in the urban deferred zone as initiated. Precinct one or LSP one in the southwest corner is a logical first stage and will constitute an extension of the urban front that can progress ahead of the urban deferred balance. Next slide please. A fourth request of the commission is to require preparation of a local structure plan for precinct one as a critical next stage of the project. Our reasons for requesting this will be discussed towards the end of our presentation. Next slide please. Our request for precinct one to proceed direct to urban is premised upon the significant progress made in the past 12 months since the amendment was initiated, where there are no longer any outstanding matters or conditions that warrant the land being held in the urban deferred zone. With reference to the matters listed when the amendment was initiated, there's now an approved district structure plan that provides a comprehensive planning framework to guide and inform future processes and approvals. This removes any risk that other approvals can be progressed without the necessary matters having first been addressed. Precinct one is not affected by any land use buffers that require resolution prior to a lifting. It's been demonstrated that there is sewer and water capacity for precinct one with further detail to be refined through the local structure plan and subdivision processes. The district water management strategy has been updated as per the Department of Water's request, and we expect to receive approval shortly. And the land that may be required for the widening of Monday John Road in the future will be held in the urban deferred zone so as to not prejudice the future delivery of infrastructure by main roads. Next slide please. Should precinct one progress direct to urban, it follows that a concurrent amendment to the local scheme to zone the land development should be progressed. A concurrent amendment to the local scheme is possible and warranted as there are no scheme text provisions necessary to coordinate future development or secure environmental outcomes. The need for scheme text is obviated by the comprehensive framework that the DSP provides and the advice of the EPA on the amendment, which did not raise any environmental matters to be addressed through scheme text. Further to the DSP framework, the commission's published guidance for the preparation of local structure plans will also ensure that all relevant matters and documentation are addressed at the local structure plan stage. A concurrent local scheme amendment will avoid unnecessary processes for the proponent, the local government and the commission, and will assist with the timely delivery of much needed residential land. Next slide please. So should precinct one proceed to the development zone under the local scheme as requested, preparation of a local structure plan would naturally follow. However, for the avoidance of doubt and in order for a local structure plan to commence as soon as possible, we request that the commission pass a separate resolution item to require a local structure plan for precinct one. The ability for the commission to do this is expressly provided for under the local planning scheme regulations and will formalise what should occur as a matter of course. As mentioned by Damien, Stockland is keen to commence the preparation of a local structure plan as soon as possible, but preparation and lodgment will require engagement with the local government as well as other state government agencies. A resolution of the commission to require this preparation of a structure plan will provide a clear head of power to commence this work prior to the final gazettele of the scheme amendment, which can take some time. This request does not seek anything that wouldn't normally occur as a matter of course, but it will provide a clear direction and enable more detailed planning to progress now. Next slide please. In closing, precinct one is capable of progressing directly to the urban zone under the metropolitan region scheme and the development zone under the local planning scheme. Preparation of a local structure plan can then proceed with certainty, enabled by a separate resolution of the commission as requested. This will enable Stockton to progress the more detailed planning that is required for precinct one, targeting delivery in eighteen months to assist boost housing supply in the region. Thank you for your time this morning and we'll be pleased to assist with any questions that the commission has.
Thank you very much, Damien, Daniel and Shane for joining us today. And I will open it up for questions from commission members. Perhaps I could have the first question. I'm interested, Shane, to hear from you on the district water management strategy. We have been provided with an amended version that has been sent through to, to Dura. And just noting that it talks about replacing these previously proposed bund with embankments and wiers and provides updates to evolve in relation to flood storage. Are you able to talk to that in a bit more detail and any discussions that you've had around that?
Yep. I think the, the essence of, I suppose, the recent objections from Dura is, is the construction of a pond along the Peel Main Drain. So simply, we had a, a, a piece of earthworks that would allow us to fill and hold flood storage to a higher, a higher level. That is, that is the main objection from Dura. So what we've done is removed that. We haven't placed any additional infrastructure in terms of those wiers. They were already in the original plan and have been in since March twenty twenty three in discussions with Dura. So, so that, that's not a new, that's not a new element that we brought in. That's already there. So, and simply to explain the difference, I suppose, is that to remove the Peel Main Drain Bund and still hold the same amount of flood storage, we had to find more storage within that area. So what we did was rationalise the earthworks. So what we tried to do was to avoid sculpting out the drainage corridors more than we needed to. But there was a lot of excess material in there that we could sculpt out. So essentially, the three hundred mil of additional storage that we lost, we have replaced that further back up through the channels, the multiple use corridors, by just optimising earthworks. That is, that is the simple change. The additional bonds and embankments, they, they have already been planned and in there since the start. In terms of discussions with Dura, yeah, but, you know, we like to work collaboratively with them, I suppose. And, and we went up to Jundalup and met with the officers there. And before we started the modelling and before we started the revisions of the DWMS, we agreed on the principles in which we were, what we were planning to do and how we were planning to do it. And they were largely accepted in, in a meeting forum and minutes were taken at that meeting forum. And then we've concluded by actually doing the modelling and updating the reports and providing that. With respect to, to, to that, you know, that took a bit of time and we've been able to deliver that, I think on Friday the sixteenth or Monday the nineteenth. And so Dura's had that probably for just over a week now. And in terms of risk, I suppose what we're talking about is just finding more flood storage. In the event that Dura doesn't agree with what we do, it's simply a case of widening those flood corridors more than, at the moment, they're sitting in the same width as they've been advertising the DSP. If them, if it requires them to move, they would move in, in an order of five or 10 metres. And as you probably are aware, they're already about 200 metres wide, 250 metres wide in most places. So it's a case of slightly widening them. I don't see that compromising the, I suppose, the, the MRS amendment. It's simply going to be a block plan saying urban. And it's no parks and reserve for those drainage widths. So to me, in terms of a risk item, just to answer your question, or not to answer the question that you may ask, but that would be the simple resolution. But I'm, I'm confident based on the agreed principles and the updated modelling.
Thank you, Shane. Members' questions? Commissioner Heron and then Commissioner Hall.
Thank you. Through the chair, just in relation to, should urban zoning be proceeded for that initial stage? Obviously, local structure planning you were indicating would then be the next bit. The, the multiple use corridors, their designation under that local structure planning, I'm, I'm assuming would be parks and recreation or something of the equivalent. Is that a reasonable assumption?
Yes, through the chair. Yes, Commissioner Heron, that is correct. So the district structure plan that was recently approved contains a multiple use corridor management strategy. For, for that, one, it says that they will be in public ownership. Secondly, it says that the local structure plan will need to, need to designate a suitable local reserve for those areas. And that will be further documented as part of a multiple use corridor management plan to be submitted with a local structure plan.
Thank you. Further to that, through the chair, in terms of the issue that was raised in relation to lot one, and I also note, there's obviously a number of landholders in different portions. In terms of cost sharing arrangements or management of that, has that been explored to the point that that would be able to be progressed in parallel with any local structure plan?
Look, across the broader DSP, there's an equitable distribution of the MUC corridors across all landowners, aside from lot one, the City of Rockingham lot. And that was done on the basis that, from our perspective, we see absolutely zero development potential on that lot. We are not putting any additional stormwater on it than currently exists in a pre-development state. So there's no excess water going on there with the upgrade to the DWMS that has gone in recently. So given the highly constrained nature of the site and the lack of any development capacity or potential that we could see, that is the only lot that doesn't have urban. The rest of it, all other ownership in there has an equal distribution of residential outcomes versus multiple use corridor.
And just further to that, I think the process that the commission is considering today is to zone precinct one urban in its entirety. That includes lot one. And so should there be any further opportunities for those discussions, the rezoning of the site to urban, as has been considered by the commission today, would not preclude that from happening.
No, thank you. Through the chair though, the, if, if the designation under the local structure plan is to go to a local reserve, I mean, there is obviously absolute limitation attached to that. But again, we can, we can have that discussion separately during the debate. I just want to be clear. So at, at this point in time, there's not intended to be any cost sharing arrangements in relation to land acquisition that it is considered to be covered through the land allocation.
Correct. We have had one on one discussions with the city regarding the acquisition of their lot. We are open to that if there is a loss of value in that. We don't foresee any loss of value from our perspective, but the city has indicated they have a valuation for the lot. If they're open to sharing that, we can, we're open to looking at it. So it's directly contained to that lot and we're happy to work with the city on a one on one basis on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hall.
Thanks, Chair. My question is relating to the Mambadong Road widening and the extent of the, your request for the urban zone to be applied. Is, could you just share if there's any been any recent further work to define the road widening width? And just to clarify exactly what you're looking for with regards to the urban zone and the potential for the road widening under, under John Road.
Through, through the chair, don't know if we can go back to the indicative zoning plan that we shared during our presentation, but the, there's the urban deferred sliver to the north of Manda John Road. That area coincides with the land that was recently shown on the district structure plan as the land subject to further investigations by main roads. So since the DSP was approved, that note, there hasn't been any further response from main roads other than that the way we've represented it will be consistent with their advice to date, which requires a hundred metre corridor so as to not prejudice any future planning for Manda John Road.
Okay, mate, Chair, just to clarify, so your request is to reflect as shown on the plan.
We, we, we accept that some of the land needs to be held in the urban deferred zone to allow that future planning by main roads to occur.
Commissioners, any further questions? There are no further questions, so we thank you for your deputation. Commissioners, that concludes our verbal deputations today, and we have not received any written deputations. So we can now proceed to decision making of day. So first of all, we have just one item in non-items for decision. That is item three point one, which is the proposed MRS amendment for Lake Farm Retreat Urban Precinct. Approval to advertise. And we are joined by Rowan Miller and Brent Daven, item. Welcome, Rowan and Brent. You've heard the deputation today from the applicant. You provided us with the report. Is there anything that you would like to add before we go to questions?
There's nothing I would like to add. Thank you, Chair. Nothing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Commission members opening to questions. Commissioner Sandry.
Thank you. Just a quick question. So I appreciate the recommendation to go through to the urban zone. I just wanted to clarify some of those outstanding elements that are contained within the report from borough agencies that you're comfortable that will be dealt with through a structure plan process. Really?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, yes. I think as the, as proponents alluded to, a lot of this is kind of, I guess, natural or improper planning that will progress as the, as the amendment carries on as well. Noting that the, I guess, through the local structure planning, those things such as access and servicing will be dealt with, but also noting that the proponents are currently undergoing, I guess, parallel discussions with DWA on the DWMS as well on the finalisation of that, which is obviously expected to happen. I guess by the time the MRS amendment comes back around to the, to the commission's dealing in the future as well.
Commissioners, any further questions? Commissioner Hall?
Sure. Currently in the MRS, there's the water protection zone that applies, giving some safeguards to, to water in this area. Can you just help to clarify what safeguards will exist if this proposal recommendation is adopted?
So through, through the chair, the water quality protection notes that, that they were in the, in the commission have available to, for, for that sort of guidance as well. And then the, I think, the focus on the DWMS in this instance for this amendment, particularly in that context of the water protection zone, in that the hazard and risk identification matters have been, have been really given, I guess, a pretty firm level of, of consideration, especially by DWA, noting that the sort of considerations of protecting the drinking water area as well as nearby wellhead extraction walls and things like that as well. And I guess the, those water quality protection notes outline sort of compatible uses and incompatible uses. And as the planning progresses, there are, I guess, those sort of safeguards and mechanisms in place through this consultation, DWMS and local structure planning, that we're not, not putting incompatible or inappropriate uses or forms of planning within those, in those areas that are, that are sensitive and require protection.
Commissioner Heron and then Commissioner Brooks.
Thank you. And through the chair, if, if I can just ask, obviously, one of the matters that was raised was around the WAPC land which adjoins to the east. Can I be, is there any advice in terms of current thinking, planning or otherwise in relation to that WAPC land? The, the second part was in relation to, again, that, that issue of connectivity between this precinct and the remainder of Balladura. There, there was reference obviously to, to that being a, a consideration. And whether, I know that roundabouts are in vogue at the moment, but whether alternative traffic treatments at the key intersection might be a potential resolution to be dealt with as a post obviously rezoning.
Through the chair, thanks for the question. The, the lot to the east that's being dealt with, I guess, by the department more broadly in terms of the context of being WAPC owned land, more in the context of what planning is happening around the Balladura train station. So that is progressing separately, noting also that there will be opportunities for the subject site, subject precinct to connect to that, which may result in, I guess, resolving more of those broader connectivity issues and unlocking, I guess, some answers through that eastern site. And then in terms of detailed intersection planning and crossings that may be considered through the Hepburn Avenue as well, I guess, there's, there's, there's nothing to stop that being explored further through, through progressive planning processes.
Thank you. And through the chair, the, just further to that, so would we expect to have some level of insight around that proposition for, you know, again, not nothing necessarily in detail, but would we have some indication about likely intentions for that land by the conclusion of this rezoning process? Because obviously, an opportunity to integrate local planning between the two precincts would have a certain level of logic.
Thank you through the chair. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that we would need necessarily resolution of exactly what happened on the learning site prior to this amendment. I think that, I think that through the, on other things, through the, the consultation process on this amendment, we can gather information on that. And I think one of the fundamental things that a structure plan has to And I think one of the fundamental things that a structure plan has to do is demonstrate that you can integrate development with what we have in and the joining. And will be addressed and necessarily needs to be fully understood at this stage.
Thank you.
I guess I'm interested in the process that's been followed with DWA and the water corporation. So that, noting that there's two wellheads located immediately to the north of the site. The current concept plan doesn't identify those wellhead protection zones as being reserved for open space. Conservation area, which is typically what's required under the water quality protection notes. Again, support from DWA and water corporation. I recognise that that can be resolved through the local structure planning process, but obviously the concept plan gives an indication of the intent for the site. Has DWA and all the water expressed desire or need for those areas to be reserved?
Through the chairs, I guess not in a specific sense in terms of that was the specific request for it to be protected that way, but definitely have picked up and noted that there will need to be further detailed consideration for compatible users and the appropriate, I guess, buffers or integration with those wellhead protection zones that are immediately abutting the site.
And thank you, Brent. Through the chair, I would also add to that that it is our expectation that those matters are resolved. It was prior to the amendment finalized.
Commissioner Hall, just let me check. Commissioner Heron, you still have your hand up to do want to ask further questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Hall.
Thanks, Chair. Just further to my first question or my previous question, just referring to the attachment in district water management strategy. It states that the site's currently a public drinking water source priority two area and requires this classification requires reclassification P three, which is a decision of the planning department of planning lands and heritage. Could you just clarify what that process is and what instrument or authorisation is given to the department to make that change?
Thank you, Chair. So I suppose that wording perhaps is could have been tighter within the DWMS document. So my understanding is that, I suppose, if the commission were to take a decision in response to the planning frameworks that this land should go into the urban zone, then that would be the trigger, I guess, for the reclassification.
So I can give a little bit of clarification of the process. So the way that the the public drinking water source areas function is that they will remain P two until such time as a planning decision triggers its change to a P three star. There is no process for the public water source area to be re prioritised until a planning decision has been made. So it is solely in the power of the planning process to make that determination that the land is suitable for transitioning to a change of land use. And then in response to that, the P three restart classification, it's not actually P three, it's P three star, which is a bit different, gets triggered. So it seems that different, but that's actually the way the process has to work. It has to be triggered by a planning.
Brooks?
Thank you, Chair. Just in relation to the wastewater. So I know in the report it talks about construction of a temporary wastewater pump station for temporary diversion. And the diversion, as I understand it, is capable of servicing approximately five hundred lots. Can you just talk me through the temporary pump station? Is that able to cater for the five hundred or would that be the greater number? And then just in terms of timing of that temporary nature?
Certainly. Through the chair, the Water Corp have advised that they've done a few different scenarios and some high level, I guess, modelling with the different scenarios that could occur. The five hundred lots is for the temporary diversion to the Kingfisher Ave pump station. And then a temporary pump station will be able to service a larger amount. It progressed that way. And the proponent has indicated that they're comfortable in terms of, I guess, staging and getting to where they need to be in terms of progressing development alongside the, I guess, the wastewater coming online. And separately, also, the Water Corp have advised that once this MRS amendment has been initiated, as well as consideration of the eastern lot eight ten, that they will undertake further and more detailed service planning investigations there to, I guess, have a firm understanding of what an ultimate outcome would look like.
Just in terms of that timing, I think you mentioned short to medium term. Do you have any indication as to what that might be?
Through the chair, I think it was, it's just more that the, I know the proponents are quite keen to get moving on this one and being that how well located it is to existing reticulated service network. I think that was more in the context of the, it's immediate accessibility and I guess the immediate options to have either a temp station or temp diversion that then in the short to medium term, that could occur basically as soon as planning processes are run.
Commissioners, any further questions? Thank you very much. Then if we can move to consideration of the item. Moved by Commissioner Sandry, seconded by Commissioner Adair. Welcome. Any comments from members? Go ahead. That's the mover.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of this item, I think that we've heard from the deputy being the applicant and the department that this site aligns strategically. It actually unlocks a piece of land that exists within what is an urban area. The servicing is, seems to be available. So it's something that can progress fairly quickly. I do know that there are some outstanding matters that need to be considered in terms of environmental considerations, water protection, et cetera. And I'm happy for that to be considered through the next planning phase. And also with consideration of a P three star priority area. I would also just note that the city of Swan has suggested in their note, in their response back for a consideration of a local centre in this area. They obviously feel that there is a demand there. So that could be something that's considered in the future structured planning process. But overall, it aligns strategically and I'm happy to support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Sandry. Commissioner Adair, would you like to make any extra comments? Any commissioners wish to add? Commissioner Hall?
Thanks, Chair. Just was a concern that the attachment in the district water management strategy will be a public facing document and it just appears to have information that's not quite right. And I just think that needs to be updated to help with people making a submission and or to reflect the process that Commissioner Brooks outlined. So whether that can be done administratively or needs a resolution of the commission, I'm open to discussing them.
Rowan or Brent, any comments in relation to updates to the district water management strategy?
Thank you. And through the chair, I'm quite comfortable that can be done administratively and we can work with the proponents and their consultants to have that section updated to clarify that process if that's desired.
All further comments?
Capture in the notes or the minutes of the meeting.
Yes, it would be, yes. Commissioner Adair?
May I move an amending motion to part two to delete the words form the opinion and replace them with determines?
Yes, just in terms of the language, the normal language, any issue from the team in relation to determining rather than forming the opinion?
With Chair, no. Either would be perfectly fine. Yep. I think the, I think the language in the relation classification talks about an opinion, but a decision either ways. And I think that's why we use that word. Any issues change?
That's true. Thank you, Commissioner Adair. Can I have a second for the amendment? Seconded by Commissioner Hall, any dissent? That's carried. Thank you very much. Any further amendments or comments? Probably just comment that, you know, there are obviously sensitivities around priority border areas and it has been flagged by Water Corp, but I think it's really important to note that this has been, you know, has had, its history is that it's come through as a planning investigative area and has been marked as an urban expansion area. So it has been considered through the studies underpinning Perth and Peel. So I'm happy to support this. And I think that Commissioner Brooks has raised a very good point about the type of development that happens within the wellhead buffer areas. And I think that we've seen a concept plan today. We understand it's a concept only and that that can be worked through as it moves on to the further planning stages. So I'm happy to support the amendment. The MRS amendment. Any further comments? Any dissent that's carried? Thank you very much. Commission members, we will need to move for consideration of confidential items. So I will need to seek a move and second to resolve that the meeting be closed to members of the public. Moved by Commissioner Hall, seconded by